Meeting will come to order.
Please rise from the floor, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Buntan.
President.
Campbell.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Menzner.
Here.
Oh, yes, we need a motion to excuse Mayor Dempsey and Commissioner Raker.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Buntan.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, and communications, and reports, including quarterly department head reports. We have on the schedule here to present a historical marker. Is there someone here to present that? No, you're not prepared to present it? Okay, we'll move along then, and let's have announcements, and then we'll go to the quarterly department head reports. Lisa, you don't have any? Okay, then we'll do the quarterly department head reports.
Yeah, so we'll have Brian Tingley start off this evening with his report from community development.
Thank you. Planning Commission's been busy this quarter. They granted special land use approval for the Winter Circles Church to operate out of the old CVS building at 258 Southbound Grashit, and permits for the interior renovation have been issued. Granted site plan approval for a 2,300 square foot addition to the Comfort Prosthetics Building at 276 Southbound Grashit. This project involves the purchase and demolition of the adjacent building at 272 Southbound. Site plan approval is granted for a new drive-through canopy for the future county clerk's office at 120 North Main, which is the former Tomlin Bank Building, and they granted site plan approval for a 2,400 square foot addition to the Ebola Service Building at 250 North Rose. The master plan update process is moving forward. Downtown Plan Focus Group was held by the consulting team in September. This will be followed by a focus group on the economic development and marketing strategy in the coming weeks. Going on to third quarter inspection stats, there were 319 building mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and zoning permits issued, 477 code enforcement actions taken, there were 432 rental inspections and vacant property verifications, and there have been increases in that since our rental inspector has increased his time that he's putting into that. 101 new dwellings received rental certificates of compliance. There were 22 new certificates of occupancy issued for both commercial and residential buildings, and since the spring, our weed and gas grass cutting contractor has performed 449 cuttings throughout the city. And lastly, the Train Depot Roof Grant Project was completed in September. The State Historic Preservation Office is very pleased with all three grant projects that have taken place since 2010, which has resulted in basically a brand-new exterior for the Train Depot. In partnership with the city, the Transit Museum raised $10,000 to offset the city's general fund contribution to the project. I would like to thank the local questers, Bass City Association, Nickel and Saft, and Lawrence Bernard for all contributing at least $1,000 towards this project. We do have Lois Yulins, the Historic District Chair, in the audience with us. She was very instrumental in helping staff write all three grants, as well as manage the grant process, as well as a couple of members of the Transit Museum here with us this evening. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Brian? Here's a question.
I just have a question, Brian, on the 101 new rental certificates. So on top of the base of rentals that we already have, we added 101 new ones.
No, that's not correct. These are just, most of these are most likely recertifications. Approximately every two years, we do require that rental units, they have to go through a rental inspection process and be issued a new certificate of compliance. So it doesn't mean there's necessarily 101 new rentals. Some of those may be new rentals, but I don't have that broken out.
Okay. Thanks.
Next, we'll have Blair Sealover from the Utilities Department provide a report. First one for Mr. Sealover here, I think, is during the regular quarterly report, so...
Hello.
Blair Sealover is representative of the F&amp;V Operations and Resource Management Company, which we signed a management contract with to provide department head services essentially to the city, and overall management oversight and direction to our utilities operations. So Mr. Sealover's here from F&amp;V.
Thank you. We've been fairly busy through July, August, September. We started out working on all three facilities, the RTB, the water treatment plant, and the wastewater plant. We began with getting all the meters calibrated. That was one of our big things that we did right out of the gate. From there, I guess I'll go into the wastewater plant first. We've had a number of milestones. First of all, the wastewater plant, when we took it on, had a tremendous sludge issue. The DEQ was breathing down your neck, you were doing daily reports to them, just on every little thing, they wanted to see every part of that. We've since got the plant back where it belongs in compliance, it's operating normally. It's the first time the plant's mixed liquor or their biomass has been at the right, or the normally, the normal parameters since 2012. So it's a big, big deal. It took a lot of work to get to that point, took a lot of pump repairs, a lot of reconfigurations. We reconfigured your centrifuges so both the centrifuges could be operated at the same time. That assisted in the dewatering efforts. You were in such a hole that it took a little bit of tap dancing to get it to the right place. That was one of the big, big deals that we did. We also got your RAS pumps running correctly. We've reduced the rate. We found you were returning a lot of extra, pumping a lot of extra water around the circle, essentially. That in itself should reduce your electric bill. The other thing that was a big deal at the wastewater plant was the conveyor. We've done some experimenting and actually had the conveyor running this morning, so that's a big deal. That gives you another way to remove solids other than land application. If we can get the rest of that done, we've been looking at three different options, the conveyor, the use of a geobag, and then conventional biosolids as you currently do. Give us some more options.
And just to expand on that a little bit, the land application is what we had used previously, and that's subject to vagaries and outside factors that are beyond our control and beyond the control of the contractor. So basically, if the fields that the biosolids are going to be applied to is too wet, they can't go out and get that accomplished. And if they can't get that accomplished, then it creates a system problem in our plants where things accumulate and the plant can't operate at the efficiencies that it should have. So we were relying on that field application exclusively in a fast, and what Mr. Sealover's talking about is trying to broaden our horizons here and give us different options to deal with that issue so we don't get into an operational condition where it becomes problematic again. And that's something that we were actively pursuing and they're bringing to fruition here with some different things, like looking at this conveyor system, which would allow us to directly take care of it ourselves if we get the system operating properly. So it's just giving us better options, more options, so that we don't get ourselves into a situation where we have an operational condition that doesn't work for us.
Yeah, and that wet spring and fall was not unique to Mount Clemens. That happened throughout the state, and a lot of plants found themselves in the same shape where you guys were. It's taken a lot to dig out. The other big project we've been trying to do is get the retention basin cleaned. I was telling Steve earlier, that's been, that project's been kind of one thing after another. The pumps need to be repaired, the flights need to be repaired, the chlorination system need to be cleaned out and repaired, the water cannons need to be repaired, but those have all been repaired, the pumps have been, it's been dewatered. We've removed three dumpsters full of material already. Out of that, the rest of it's being flushed to the wastewater plant. There's two more dumpsters there. Anticipate being done with that effort by the end of the week. This is the first time in 12 years, from what the operators are telling me, that this basin's been cleaned out. So it's a big deal.
Bit of a public service announcement on that item. You know, potentially, when you're dealing with that situation, you had, we had a situation where the retention basin had stored water for a long period of time, and had built up some solids in the system in that basin as well, and that was creating some odor issues in the surrounding area that people have come up to talk to us about in the past, if you recollect. So we were going to fix that problem, but sometimes when you fix a problem, it's worse in the short run, and then in the longer run, there's relief. So we did put out some notices to the surrounding residents that there would be a potential for that happening. Based on the timing of it and based on how we're handling it, I don't think that's going to become an issue, but we did send out warning letters in case that did become an issue because it was going to be better in the future, but potentially worse in the short run. Now that it's a little cooler, we might not have that issue.
Windows are closed.
So that's just a public service announcement for people in the area in case something does come up here. We did put out notices ahead of time to the residents, but I also wanted to mention it here at this public meeting.
And then the last thing is the water plant. We've had a couple of big wins there. The ozone unit wasn't operating when we took it over. That is now. We had, we got to scare it first. We found out that the existing unit was $700-plus thousand to replace, and the company that manufactured it wanted $45,000 or $46,000 to maybe make it work, and we weren't going to guarantee anything. We got a local contractor in there for $800 bucks. He did the electrical repairs, and it's back in service and running fine. So that's a, that's a big win there. The other big win is there's a backwash pump there that was put in in 1958, I believe. I think it's about a year older than me. And it was having some major, major issues, to the point where the operations staff had put some pumps in the room to dewater it with fire hoses. That's how much water was leaking out of this pump. That's all been fixed, it's fixed for about $40 bucks. It was a matter of unplugging some drain holes and rerouting some plumbing. So that all, that was kind of a big win there as well. Those are the highlights. There's a lot of stuff in the packet, but those are, those are the big things. Does anybody have any questions?
So we're seeing lots of benefit from the added expertise that FVOP is able to bring to the table here. Again, it's not a situation where it's one employee, it's...
Team.
A team of people that they bring to the table. If there's something that's outside of the scope of the current team's expertise, they bring in another person as a resource to look at problems. And that's sort of been some, the source of some of the benefits, like, you know, the $800 versus the $46,000, which I'm firmly in favor of those kinds of things. You know, that was a relatively new employee, I think, that was brought on that caught on to how that could be, could be addressed for much cheaper in a way that was much, much kinder to our budget, and don't think we don't appreciate it, so... If there's any questions.
Yeah, I just wondered, on the monthly statistics that you provided for, is there are figures for October, November, and December under water production gallons and treatment volume? Are those estimates?
No, those are metered flows.
For October, November, December?
Uh, no, 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 I'm sorry. You gotta look at what you got there. Sorry. Obviously, it can't be for October, November, and December.
Yeah, I was wondering. There you go. Is that just maybe just carried over from last year?
Yeah, I think that's basically, there's no underlying detail or puppet here, so I think it's probably just a carryover somehow. It goes from a prior report. I'll have to look at it.
So it's probably 2004 figures just erroneously left on?
These are, yeah, these are through the, I'm sorry, they did not get switched over.
Okay, no problem. We'll make a note of it.
Sorry about that. I will make sure that gets corrected in the next report. Thank you.
Just one more thing. What foreseeable things are we working on to improve the system?
Well, you've got a lot of foreseeable things. I mean, one of the things we do have done is we've got your inventory pretty well done. You're entering a Saw Grant now, too. There's a lot of things that, there's really some exciting things going on. We're working on your capital plan, and almost to the point where I'm ready to present a draft of that. So you'll actually have a plan to plan your financial, rather than, oh, this broke, that broke. I mean, that's how you've been running. I hate to be a naysayer, but that's, I mean...
That was one of the deliverables that we asked for in our scope of work in the original bid process, and that's something that I'm excited to see they've basically completed. Now it's a matter of assigning some dollar figures and trying to figure out how we can schedule those out over a reasonable period of time and keep ourselves current and in a better situation from a capital investment standpoint.
Denise?
And my...
I'm sorry, Commissioner Menzner.
Thank you. I just wondered what part of the contract was that you were going to have monthly training of employees, and I wondered what training has already taken place?
We already have given them, they've had three safety trainings. They've got another safety training tomorrow. Later this month, we have a hydrant and a valve. East Jordan Iron Works is coming in to do a hydrant and valve seminar. Next month, we have a corrosion control specialist coming in, so we've got a number of training. And we're trying to open that training up to other operators throughout the area, too. It's kind of like a goodwill thing to do throughout, for everybody. But the safety training is done through F&amp;V, and those are a monthly, monthly training that we do.
And there's quizzes.
And there's quizzes, and we document it, and that'll help with your insurance company as well.
Yeah, which I'll have some information next time around. I can tease it for right now, but our experience through MML and our loss control consulting through MML was the best we've had in 12 years. I'll give you some more information on that, but that's notwithstanding the additional impact that trainings like this will have in terms of, you know, encouraging employees and providing employees the information as to how to operate on a safe basis, day in and day out. But our experience was very, very good this past year, so I'll give you more information on that in the November meeting.
Tomorrow's safety training is on cold stress and cold, worry about the cold. The guys that are out in the street working in the ditches and in the wet, it's really a big deal that they pay attention to frostbite, and they pay, and now's a good time to train them, not in the middle of January when it's too late, or February after the fact, so we'll do cold stress tomorrow. That'll be our training.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Finance Director Marilyn Delugie, please.
Well, mine is not as extensive as the water and sewer plan, but basically, since July, we have been working for the audit. July, we're preparing reports. Part of August, and our audit actually started August 17th and has continued on. We're hoping to have, at the commission meeting, November 16th will be our report that we'll present to the commission for approval. Although I just completed some of the final information, one of the new Gatsby that they've come out with is the Gatsby 67, 68, and that's the governmental standard boards, and they want the communities that have pension plans to do a report that shows the pension liability associated with the city's net assets. And to report this year, we did very well again. We were at 102.73 percent, so that's good information there. Also, too, we still, on July 1st, our retirees' insurance went into effect, the new insurance went into effect, so we spent a lot of time with the retirees and their issues and some things that came up, which are basically minor, but some we did have issues with, and so we took care of that, along with the active employees. Changes were made in that also. Other than that, there really wasn't too much but the audit.
Thank you.
Keep on going right down the line with Jeff Wood, our Department of Public Services Director.
During the last quarter, the Public Service Department has completed surveying the streets and has issued a PO and repair list to our contractor to make some minor concrete repairs this fall. We winterized the irrigation systems, the downtown fountains, city buildings, and the boat docks. We continue to mow over 150 acres of grass weekly. We've cleaned, graded, and set up the ball diamonds at Memorial Fields for rentals as requested, and have begun some upgrades to the diamonds to prepare for the spring season because this is our last week of rentals with them ball diamonds. We've completed the street striping program and replaced traffic signs as needed due to damage or poor reflectivity. We've trimmed 86 and removed 30 city trees as requested and deemed necessary by city staff, prepared the equipment for the upcoming leaf pickup season, which will begin either next week or the week after. We've begun preparing the winter snow removal and salting equipment, issued 2,503 parking citations, generating approximately $104,000 in meter revenue, responded to 107 animal control complaints, and we've began holding monthly safety and training meetings with all the DPS staff, as recommended after having a meeting and audit by the Michigan Municipal League Loss Control, and supplied services to 15,482 persons utilizing the dialeride system.
Okay, thank you.
And our city clerk, Lisa Borges.
The city clerk's office has been in the process of preparing for the November 3rd city election. Anyone who needs information about their precinct location or would like to receive an absentee ballot can call the city clerk's office at 469-6818-OPTION3. The city clerk's office will be open on Saturday, October 31st, from 8:30 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. for those who would like to request an absentee ballot or turn in their absentee ballot. Photo identification is required to obtain a ballot on that day. Saturday, October 31st, is the last day that the city clerk's office can mail an absentee ballot out. Monday, November 2nd, is the last day that a voter can come into the clerk's office to receive a ballot. They have to vote the ballot while they're here. We continue to accept applications for appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. Residents interested in volunteering for one of our many boards can download an application from the city's website, or call the city clerk's office, and we'll be happy to mail one to you. Currently, there are vacancies on the following boards: Beautification Advisory Committee, Board of Zoning Appeals, Board of Zoning Appeals Alternate, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Harbor Commission, Historical Commission, Historic District Commission, and the Traffic Safety Committee.
That should complete the reports.
Okay, thank you. Next is adoption of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Roll call. Campbell?
Yes.
Hill? Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Buntan?
Yes.
Okay, next is public participation. This is your opportunity to come up to the microphone and speak. If you wish to speak, please give your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
I'll kick this off. My name is Laura Fournier. I'm at 70 Ludwick in Mount Clemens. A few things. One, I enjoyed the report of the utility director. It was very candid, and I appreciate that very much. Not to take away from the audit, because I know what it's like to go through an audit, and no one else appreciates it except another accountant. But on the subject of tax abatements, it was brought up at the last meeting, and I believe that you're voting on it this year, or at this meeting. I, one, am very opposed to that. We just had one of the highest increases in our city taxes, and we're all still reeling from that. And I know I have brought a lot of investment into this city, but have not received any tax abatement. I'm about to bring a business into this city and didn't think task for a tax abatement. Maybe I should rethink. But while I really welcome that you're coming into the city, it's an existing building. It's a building in good repair, and I believe the city has a lot to offer, a business, without giving them a tax abatement. The other thing that I wanted to ask is an update on the building on the corner of Robertson and Northbound Grashit. I have had two people, unfortunately, none of them in this room, offer to help with the teardown of that building if we could get something going, and I think that we have to get moving if we even want to hope to get it done before the weather really gets bad. And finally, I would be remiss without bringing up sidewalks. I do appreciate what has been done, and I've seen a lot of improvements in my neighborhood. However, to even begin to think that we have dented this problem is ridiculous. I invite any of you to contact me. I will go into work late and go for a walk with you in the morning and show you some of the ridiculous sidewalk problems that still exist in my neighborhood. Some of the worst have not been addressed. Thank you.
Christine Vernier, 65 Ludwick Street. I just support and agree with Laura Fournier about the abatement and also the sidewalks. Thank you.
If I may, through the chair, make a comment before anybody else. Ms. Fournier mentioned we were going to vote on that tonight. Just to clarify, we're having a public hearing. There's not going to be a vote to authorize it or not authorize it tonight. That'll come at a future meeting.
My name's Sue Dunsmore, and I live at 60 Ludwick, and I'm also in agreement with Laura on the tax abatement and the sidewalks.
Hello, my name is Nathan Peschel, and I'm a resident at 134 South Avenue, the South Avenue that's between Robertson and Church Street. And I've made a couple calls into the city Utilities Department, Public Services, just the general offices at Mount Clemens, just trying to, I guess, raise the awareness of the condition of our street on South Avenue. It's pretty, blight is an understatement. You gotta go travel very slowly, 10, 15 miles an hour. There's been a lot of patchwork, and I guess this kind of piggybacks off of what the previous person mentioned about the sidewalks. But our street is so bad, and I've had, all my attempts have been to no avail, and I'm just curious as to if there's anything in the city budget or in the future plans to repave or to lay down some concrete on my street. Are there any, is there any response to that?
We'll respond to that next time around. We'll talk with the DPS director, find out what the current status is, whether there is any future plans, and then we'll be in my administrative responses at the next meeting.
Oh, I see, okay.
So...
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jimmy Dixon at 94 Park. I was here, I think, about three weeks ago, and I talked with Mr. Brown. I left my address and everything. And I think the city, about two or three days later, they was out, they cut the tree down, and I've had the sidewalk busted up, and today I had the sidewalk poured. So I just want to thank the city for being so kind, and because where I was living, the sidewalk was up so high, someone was going to get hurt. So I just want to thank each and every one of you for the time that you spent to get this done. I appreciate everything, but I spent most of all my money, so I need someone to invite my wife and I over for Thanksgiving dinner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Waschenko, 31 Miller. I'm here on behalf of the Michigan Transit Museum. As Brian mentioned in his report, the depot roof was completed, and donations were made. We conducted a fundraiser with regards to assisting the city with the match, and I've got with me a check in the amount of $10,000 that I would like to give to the city from the Michigan Transit Museum.
Wow.
Well, except that thankfully, I appreciate it. Thank you.
It's a hard act to follow.
To Laura's, it's in the Act 250, you could, a lot of good news tonight, a lot of good future for Mount Clemens. I'm representing the Kindred Neighborhood Watch. We not only watch the neighborhood, we want to get involved in the neighborhood. Every month, we go to a restaurant, a group of us from Neighborhood Watch, and visit the restaurant. Our last visit was at Bebo's, the Mexican restaurant here in town. Made our presentation there and told them what we're here for, that we survey, that we ride the city at night and make sure there's no people wandering around, breaking in buildings or anything, and they appreciated it. We're going to start a welcome wagon, and I hope to obtain the names from the city of all the residents who bought homes here in Mount Clemens, not renters, just the buyers. We hope to get this started by January. We're getting gift packets. I came here to the city hall and took all the free literature, like, for 10 packages. I'm going to go to the fire department, and anyone who wants to donate, we're asking that they would, they could donate coupons, discounts off at restaurants, or discounts at flower shop, or anything, to welcome these people into Mount Clemens and show them that we are a friendly city. Neighborhood Watch, like I say, is not just watching the neighborhood. We're here to participate and help Mount Clemens grow. We had the fire department at our last meeting, which gave a very good presentation.
Thank you.
Gloria Haller, 260 CAS. I hate to break it to you the hard way, but all this talk about economic development, that's not the answer to your cash problem. You can check with Mr. Tingley, check with, well, Marilyn while she's here, and the next one. Economic development provides money in the long term, but not right up front. It is steady, but it's over the long term. We need money right away. We need to fix those speeders, so we need more deputies to help Ms. Crop with her problem with her children and so forth, and the sidewalks. We need money for all this stuff. There's one way and one way only to get it. And I don't know, and neither does anybody else, why we have studiously avoided getting a city income tax. Yeah, I could go out and do what I was going to do and put a ballot initiative petition together and visit nineteen hundred houses. I'm not doing that. It's your job. You need to do it. You need to get a city income tax going. It's easy now. The state collects for you. They will help you set up. And that way, you see, you won't have to do all this... you know when you've got a dog and you need its tail docked? You don't go slice, slice, slice. You go dock. And that's the way you do it. And this idea of going to the county, oh, we're going to collaborate on this and collaborate on that, collaborates the newest buzzword for laziness. There's a direct way to do it. Get a city income tax going. Get the money you need and a lot of it will come from that thirty-six-some million dollar payroll at the county. They come here, they don't live here, they come here, they work, they flush toilets, they drink water, they use the services, and go home. Excuse me? Every other, all other, yeah, county seats in the southeastern Michigan, they have all had a city income tax for ages. We need to do that too. I realize that everybody sitting at this table, pretty much, is going to pay more out of their pocket as a city income tax than they will for a property tax. Well, too bad. If you've got it, you can pay it. Otherwise, you put the burden on people who not only have a fixed income. Did you hear the latest news? Social Security isn't getting an increase. So you may have a lot of houses up. You need to get going on a city income tax. And then I'll get to the item 9A in its turn.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Michelle Wise, 18-200 Terra Drive, Clinton Township. I'm just here to remind all our residents of our Halloween Spooktacular this Saturday, October 24th. We also will be having the trunk and treat, which will be sponsored by the Mount Clemens Optimist Club in the county parking structure. Their time starts noon to three. The Spooktacular starts one to four. We will have Roscoe the Clown shows. We've got Putt-Putt Course. We've got free trick-or-treat bags. And of course, Haunted Hallway that's sponsored by the Mount Clemens Lions Club. So bring your families down. It's a great weekend. The weather's supposed to be on our side again and we get well over 5,000 people who come down into our city. So come down and enjoy all the fun this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, administrative responses to issues or questions raised during previous meetings. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, a couple of things that I wanted to speak about. And before I get started, I wanted to make a comment on Mr. Jimmy Dixon's report from earlier here. First off, that was a great line. That was good. I liked that. Secondly, he had mentioned being grateful for the fact that it was taken care of within days of the commission meeting. I just wanted to make a comment on that. Literally, I had gone out to go and check on your property to see what the status was and the DPS crews were there cutting down the tree. So that was generated by activity here at the city and I was glad to see it done myself. And I did follow up with Mr. Tingley from community development to see what had happened on the sidewalks because I'd seen that the sidewalk squares were removed back then. And we're glad to hear that those were taken care of today as well and might have an impact on your Thanksgiving dinner, but we appreciate the fact you made the decision to do that. That's one thing that I wanted to mention that wasn't on the report. Secondly, Cass Avenue crosswalks request from Commissioner Hill. She had mentioned that Cass Avenue, with its traffic and crosswalks that are mismatched from a north-to-south kind of basis, would benefit from additional improved crosswalks or other pedestrian amenities. This concern was communicated by our Department of Public Services Director, Jeff Wood, to the Macomb County Department of Roads, which is a proper format for that request. And we'll see what transpires from there and Jeff will follow up on it and see what's happening once some time has elapsed.
Thank you.
Secondly, marijuana issue. We had a resident that had inquired about that and I just wanted to provide a general update as to what the status is in the city of Mount Clemens. Legislation related to this matter was a subject of various court cases. There'd be a clarification at a lower court level that was subsequently overturned at a higher court level. And the bottom line is that we have not had any marijuana dispensary or other similar facility open up in the city of Mount Clemens, more likely than not due to that legal uncertainty that has persisted to this date and time. So while I understand people's concern about that, it has not been an issue in the city. And the reason it's not been an issue in the city is because there's been a lack of clarity from the legal world in terms of what is allowable and what's not allowable. So that's my general update on that matter and that was all that I had for the administrative responses this week.
Commissioner Menzer?
Didn't we have a moratorium on marijuana factories or dispensaries in the city?
Yes.
And isn't that expired?
Yes, correct.
And we could renew that at any point?
We're considering bringing before the commission another moratorium because what's occurred now is there are three bills that have been passed by the House that specify with some detail regulations regarding dispensaries, the growing, et cetera. They're going to the Senate. If they are adopted by the Senate, then we will have some direction and be able to follow that in terms of an ordinance. In addition, those bills provide that the local community may prohibit dispensaries. It doesn't have to have them. And what Mr. Brown was alluding to was that in this original, the Attorney General had opinion that dispensaries were not permitted under the Medical Marijuana Act. That ended up going to court. The Court of Appeals ruled that he was correct. Our Supreme Court reversed that about six months ago. So that threw it back into... we let the moratorium lapse. We had it for two years almost. We extended it a number of times, but we let it lapse when the Court of Appeals indicated that they were not permitted. Well, now with the Supreme Court decision, that reverses the whole process. So we'll probably be bringing a moratorium back for a six-month period on dispensaries and that will be, should be sufficient time to see if the Senate passes the legislation as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
And if it does, then you will get, you will have alternatives relative to an ordinance. And the ordinance is by zoning, limiting where dispensaries could be. Or you make the alternative that you don't want dispensaries per, so that's what the future should be.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, approval of the minutes from the October 5th meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from the October 5th meeting.
Roll call?
Hill?
Yes.
Menzer?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, agenda item 9A, public hearing on the request by College Park Industries Incorporated to consider establishing an industrial development district at 350 Church Street under Public Act 198 of 1974.
Move to open the public hearing on the request by College Park Industries, Inc., to consider establishing an industrial development district at 350 Church Street under Public Acts 198 of 1974.
Second.
So pursuant to Public Act 198 of 1974, College Park Industries Incorporated is requesting the establishment of an industrial development district at 350 Church Street so that it may attempt to secure an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. This agenda item is to secure public comment, in particular from the city assessor and any other taxing jurisdiction affected by the proposal. As required by statute, notices were mailed to all taxing jurisdictions and a notice was placed in the Macomb daily.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If you wish to speak, come to the microphone, give your name and address. And speak. Gloria Haller, 260 CAS.
Okay. Been there, done this, number of times over the years. Most recent time was 2008. The same issue came up. Company doing well, coming to town but looking for a tax abatement. Here's all the data on that little scam that was pulled on us that you people are still allowing to go on. Before you talk about giving out another tax abatement, could you please take action on the one that you shouldn't have given out? They reneged on their deal. J.B. Cuddy. Oh, yes. Oh, we're coming to town, we're doing this, we're doing that. Hey, listen, we're going to bring in these employees, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. And I have their own statement they gave to the state that they have to, every two years, give an update and a progress report. They started, at the time they came in here, looking for a tax... if you want to see it, Mr. Brown, I can show it to you. Looking for a tax abatement. They had thirty employees. Oh, my goodness, yeah, we got to help them keep their employees. Oh, we got to help them. Okay. And they were going to add all of six. Wow. And for that, we gave them a nine and a twelve-year tax abatement totaling seventeen-some thousand dollars a year. That the first nine years is seventeen thousand and the remaining year, which is through next year, the remaining years will be seventy-eight hundred, but in total, we handed them around $186,000. And we go begging to the old people and to the poor to tax their roofs, to pay for stuff when you're giving away tax money. And the real problem is, as she explained to the state, during the economic downturn, they discovered that by doing some different approaches to their manufacturing, they not only didn't need to hire, they were able to let go. So they started with thirty employees, going to add six. The present level is nineteen. Can you do the arithmetic? That's almost fifty percent. I mean, you gave them money to do, and on their own, unilaterally, no input from the city, no apology, they just decided not to keep the terms of the tax abatement. And yet, you're making no effort to get the money back? Now, Mr. Brown and I went around and around this and he finally got the letter from the state and the state said, yeah, they don't give a rat's behind about employees. However, we could sue them for breach of contract, which it certainly is, isn't it? They told you they were going to do X and now they say, no, we're not going to do X. We decided not to, we don't have to. But just keep giving us the money. So first, you go put the brakes on that tax abatement and get back what you can. And then talk to me about another tax abatement. And not until, because you don't handle tax abatements properly. You don't follow up on them, you don't keep track of them, you don't make them perform. And this company's coming and getting... what are they doing, coming in poor-mouthed and looking for a tax abatement to a city that just about went under? And the only reason it didn't go under is because you burden your old folks, and again, your poor people, with a tax on their roof. Shame on them for even asking. Thank you for coming, but don't ask me to pay you to be here.
Okay, if no... oh.
Good evening. Camille Silda from Macomb County Planning and Economic Development and Joe Wicker from the company. I would like to share two things. First of all, we are only at the IDD, which is the Industrial Development District, public hearing. This public hearing, as Mr. Brown has stated, is for the public to comment but also for the assessor and the city staff to do an analysis. The thing about... I'll move on then to the next step, which is the industrial facilities tax exemption request. And I will tell you that the outcome of that is no city is giving anybody any money on IFTs. What happens is, the company, by doing its investment, is providing more tax dollars for each community that it invests in because upon the completion of the work that the company provides, regardless of what community or what company, there is an increase in taxable value. It is that increase in taxable value only that is fifty percent abated. The way that it is abated is it is what's called performance-based. So for example, tonight, Mr. Wicker's going to tell you about some more exciting news for his company, which probably will mean more investment into the location and some strategic synergy with McLaren Hospital. But he is not entitled to any abatement other than fifty percent of the additional taxable value. So he is going to continue paying the existing tax on the existing structure and its assessed value and then will pay an additional fifty percent of tax on the increased assessment and investment. If you have any questions, please ask. Okay, now, Mr. Wicker's...
Sure. I do have a question. How long would this abatement last?
That's up to the commission. That's a hearing that is down the road.
Yeah, that's down the road.
We adopted a policy some years ago with a bunch of criteria that set forth the number of years, the percentage amount, et cetera, that the commission might or might not grant. So that is up to the commission.
Right. You'll review that. So if Mr. Wicker could share? Or did you have more, Mr. Brown?
No, no.
Okay. Joe?
Council members, again, thank you for letting me have a few words at your meeting tonight. I think what Camille has mentioned is very important from some of the public comments I heard tonight. The building that we bought and the assessed valuation, we're going to continue to pay property taxes on that. We're going to continue to pay property taxes at any increase that the city and the county assesses us. It's the improvements that if approved through this program, that we will still pay taxes on that, but we're just at the rate of fifty percent of it. So the revenue will still be coming into the city. Last meeting, I mentioned to you that we've been in business since 1988. We've been in Macomb County our entire existence. We started out with one foot, to be as anatomically correct as possible for the amputee population so that they can be very mobile. That is our goal. Today, we have currently fourteen different feet on the market. They can be built in several different configurations, whether you're a high-active person, whether you're a very lightweight person, whether you're even a child. We're the first company in the country, in the world, I think, that came out with a pediatric foot. It was mostly for marketing purposes and what have you. We didn't price it so it would be that expensive, but we figured that the youngsters need to have a foot as well. Our most recent foot that we released back in April is a patented hydraulic cylinder ankle that gives you a damping effect, we do dorsine flexion, so the foot moves just, or the mechanical foot moves very similar to what the human foot does. I might have briefly mentioned at the end, or part of my presentation, that we acquired a company out in the Boston area at the end of September. They are in the upper orthotics, which College Park is not in. They have the Boston arm, which from the shoulder, it could be from the shoulder or anywhere in between, from the elbow. And even they have access to buy the bionic hands so that we can fit people that have loss of limb, upper body loss of limb. They are very heavily involved in research and development. The purpose of this building is to start out as a tech center, to bring our engineers over and our design experts into, because production of outside sources are restricting our growth. So we're going to start doing some of that. First of all, they're in that building. But that's only going to take up the center portion of the building. Our plan for the future is to renovate the front, and there's a little suite adjoining to it as well, and the back loading area. It used to be a floral distribution center. loss of limb, upper body loss of limb. They are very heavily involved in research and development. The purpose of this building is to start out as a tech center, to bring our engineers over and our design experts into, because production of outside sources are restricting our growth. So we're going to start doing some of that, first of all, there in that building. But that's only going to take up the center portion of the building. Our plan for the future is to renovate the front, and there's a little suite adjoining to it as well, and the back loading area, it used to be a floral distribution center. It's got about five overhead doors, which for us and our operation is sort of used it, so that'll probably have to be rebuilt up and everything else for our particular use. But we're going to have high, state-of-the-air quality measurement equipment in to measure the parts, precision parts that are going to be coming off our CNC machines. We just bought a brand-new machine that will be moving into there once the building is ready for occupancy. We have to put in compressed air, we have one room that used to be the cooler in there, it's going to be dedicated to a quality room. We just have so much going on, we want to, our CEO knows of someone on the surgical staff over at McLaren, we think that this location in Mount Clemens, because this is a dynamic community. You're close to McLaren Hospital, I believe Henry Ford is not very far from here, and I believe even St. John's has a, Beaumont has a, I know definitely a physical therapy center. We don't want to take business away from them, we don't want to compete with them, but we think we get ourselves affiliated. Our customers are the CPOs or the certified prosthesis and orthotheists. We want to be a training center for them as well. That's what that front half of the building is going to ultimately be developed for. And then also assist and coordinate, especially for the amputee population, some type of physical therapy, get them back on their feet, get them mobile. A mobile person has, increases their life longevity by a great deal, and that's what we're about. So, and just one other update. We talked about the creativity, we are a global company, we ship all over the world and what have you, and over the weekend and through today, we've had representatives from China in here to go over our product line and some new ideas. One of the new products we expect to have out in the first quarter will be a knee. So therefore, we can treat either above knee as well as currently the lower, below knee amputee. Today, we picked up from the airport two engineers from our German distributor to go over six new foot designs that they want to private label, because we have the expertise in doing so. Like I said, we've been in Fraser, a couple of years ago, we moved over, we moved out of that leased facility into Warren. We're here, still in Macomb County, in Mount Clemens, and I think we just can bring a dynamic to any community that we come into. But I think it's a nice building. We appreciate the welcome that we received today, and we appreciate consideration. And again, for those that are, again, I can't stress enough, being a bean counter myself, we're not taking dollars away, we just want a little break on the investment that we're going to make to make that facility even larger, or not larger, but better and more productive than what it has been in the past. Thank you. One last thing. In your evaluation, I invite you last meeting to get on the website, take a look at College Park. With, making pre-arrangements, you're more than welcome to come out to our facility in Warren, which is right behind Macomb Community College, and Camille can get you the number, or if you need a business card, College Park, we're in the directory, so give us a call. Be more than glad to schedule a brief plant tour with you, or a couple of you if you want to come together just to see what we do currently. In coordinate with our schedules, I have an excellent tour guide that can go through any engineering technical question that you may have, and the product, possibly our engineering staff is there as well. So, thank you very much.
Any questions? Okay. Oh, did you want to speak? Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to speak out of turn again. Laura Fournier, 70, Ludwig. And what you're doing is amazing, and I'm very, very pleased that you've chosen Mount Clemens to move into. But I don't think that that's a factor necessarily in what, whether or not a tax abatement is granted. It is a for-profit corporation, I believe. It is a not-for-profit. So therefore, this helps their bottom line. And again, I applaud what they're doing, and I hope that it, their research and the development they're doing is incredibly successful, and it will happen right in this city. But there are many businesses and many homeowners who are putting a lot of investment into this city. And anyone who has gone to the tax abatement or tax, to have your taxes reviewed, knows doggone well that very rarely does anything happen. There is a lot of investment going on in this city that deserves, if they deserve a tax break, so do we. So again, I am very much opposed to giving any type of tax abatement unless it is, also addresses the people that are in this city trying to make it.
Anyone else? Commissioner Muntzer?
I just want to clarify again. Tonight is for the IDD, the Industrial Development District, is not to vote on the tax abatement.
But you are, it's a public hearing about that, so.
Well, there'll be another one.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing on the request by College Park Industries, Inc., to consider establishing an industrial development district at 350 Church Street under Public Acts 198 of 1974.
Second.
Roll call.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Muntzer.
Yes.
Okay. Agenda item 9B, first public hearing for the downtown maintenance program.
Move to, you need a motion, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Move to open the first public hearing for the downtown maintenance program.
The enclosed map indicates, I'm sorry.
Did we have a second?
Sorry, I'm always doing that.
Second. Roll call.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Muntzer.
Yes.
So the enclosed map indicates primary and secondary streets, also enclosed as a determination of assessment that was submitted by the Downtown Development and Maintenance Committee when the program was first initiated. The projected 2015-2016 expense is $54,900, and it references the attached estimate, estimated mall maintenance cost, which has a breakdown between salary, wages, road maintenance materials, contractual services, fund balance, and the total of the assessment role.
Okay, again, this is a public hearing. If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone and give your name and address.
John Van Camp, 50, North Walnut. This isn't my first time to have to protest this special assessment, is what it is. It may be just sounding like we're going to pay for some maintenance out there. Generally speaking, maintenance on sidewalks and streets and things, I thought that that was already handled anyway. I didn't know we needed something special to take care of that, but I guess we do. At any rate, what has happened is this, is that that special assessment expired. You know, it expired some 14 years ago. It expired back in 2001. And it's been continued on. And it's an illegal assessment. It's assessment on property owners downtown so that we have to pay for something that we shouldn't have to pay for. And besides that, it's expired, and the judge said it was expired. There's been some confusion, and some of the things that I've done up at the Michigan Tax Tribunal, had I been an attorney, I'd probably be in a different position right now, and we wouldn't be paying that assessment. That assessment is illegal, and it's wrong, and it shouldn't be there. And I'm going to go back to that Michigan Tax Tribunal, and I'm going to keep going there until I'm very successful. Thank you.
Mr. Murray? Oh, okay. Anyone else? Any discussion on the part of the city commission?
Yeah, I just wanted a clarification on the rates. Is that per what? Per square foot? Per frontage foot? Per what?
I should have mentioned the primary rate of $9.24 and the secondary rate of $4.23 will generate a total assessment of $54,908.33. And I don't know if Mr. Murray remembers the answer to that question.
I think it's a per-foot rate, but that's just a guess. I'm not sure. You'd have to see a sensor.
Thank you.
So we do have a confirmation that that's correct? Right.
So if you get 50 feet, it's times $9, and what, whatever.
And the map spells out the areas that are subject to the $9.24 as opposed to the $4.23 as well.
If there's no more discussion, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public, first public hearing, adopt the rates, direct the assessor to prepare the special assessment role, and set the date for the second public hearing on November 2, 2015.
Support.
Roll call.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Muntzer.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Okay. Agenda item 9C, request approval of the sale of the vacant city-owned lot at 217 North Walnut. Is there a motion?
Move to authorize the sale of 217 North Walnut to Mr. James Brown for the amount of $750, and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the necessary documents executing the sale.
Support.
City administration is recommending the city commission authorize the sale of 217 North Walnut to Mr. James Brown in the amount of $750. Mr. Brown resides at 45 Michigan in the city of Mount Clemens. The city recently acquired this lot, had the existing structure removed, and combined it with an adjacent city-owned parcel. There's a letter dated October 5th from Mr. Brown with his offer for the parcels.
Is Mr. Brown here?
No.
No.
Discussion, questions? Go ahead.
I was just kind of wondering, I looked at a different map of this, and this backs right up to the Jermaine Jackson Community Center. So, I was kind of confused about that access.
Whether there's an issue with that access?
Yeah.
Brian, you have any comment on that?
No, there's plenty of access points on the other streets that the, that the property abuts. So this isn't, yeah, there are still plenty of access points.
Okay. Anything else ready to vote? Okay, roll call.
Hill.
Yes.
Muntzer.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay. Agenda item 9D, confirmation of city manager's appointment of finance director slash treasurer.
Move to confirm the city manager's appointment of Linda A. Kounath to the position of finance director slash treasurer effective November 2, 2015.
So what?
We need a second.
I keep on doing it again. Always jumping that gun. Sorry.
Support. Thank you. Okay, now you can read it.
Sorry, I'm always ready. Marilyn DeLuigi, our finance director treasurer, has announced her retirement effective November 24, 2015, at the close of business. It was administration's intention to complete a hiring process, process which would allow for a new finance director treasurer to work with Marilyn during a transition period. Fortunately, our hiring process was completed in a timely fashion, and that transition period is available to us. And on the hiring process, I wanted to point out, there was a three-person committee made up of members of the administration that consisted of, and I won't name names, it's just city manager, the incumbent finance director treasurer, as well as the department of public services director, were the participants in the committee for the finance director. Pursuant to the Mount Clemens City Charter, the city manager's appointment of Linda Kounath to the position of finance director treasurer is being presented for city commission confirmation. Ms. Kounath is administration's preferred candidate for this important role as a result of her unique background, knowledge, and skills in the hiring process followed by the city. Ms. Kounath's start date is scheduled for Monday, November 2, 2015, hence the request for action today. The finance director treasurer supervises and directs the day-to-day operations of the accounting division, the assessing division, the treasury division, and the purchasing division, division, and has responsibility for all of the related functions in those areas. Ms. Kounath's annual salary will be $73,000. She will also receive a benefits package, as is the case with all city department heads.
Any questions? Discussion?
And in terms of advertising, we did a pretty extensive advertising process for this position, as well as the second one that's on the agenda this evening. We went beyond the normal advertisement processes that we've used in the past, just to cast as wide a net as possible. Some things that were added to the mix was advertisement in the Michigan Chronicle, as well as additional efforts in the online realm to attract as many candidates as possible.
How many candidates were interviewed?
You know, I meant to have that information in front of me, and I didn't, I reported on it on previous meetings, but I didn't bring it with me tonight, I apologize.
Okay. So, but it was more than?
Several.
Okay, several.
We had a pretty healthy response to it.
Okay. Are you ready to vote? Roll call.
Muntzer.
No.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda item 9E, confirmation of city manager's appointment of human resources director.
Move to confirm the city manager's appointment of Jay Marie C. Hugh Banks to the position of human resource director effective November 2, 2015.
Support.
The city's human resources director position has been vacant since the retirement of Barbara Hergenrother in 2014. Administration has completed our hiring process and is ready to proceed. Pursuant to the Mount Clemens City Charter, city manager's appointment of Jay Marie C. Hugh Banks to the position of human resources director is being presented for city commission confirmation. Ms. Hugh Banks is administration's preferred candidate for this important role as a result of that unique background, knowledge, and skills, and the hiring process followed by the city. Ms. Hugh Banks' start date, again, would be scheduled for Monday, November 2, 2015. The human resources director organizes and directs the activities of the human resources department and has responsibility for all of the related functions in that department. Ms. Hugh Banks' annual salary will be $65,000. She will also receive a benefits package, as is the case with other department heads. The committee in this case followed the same process. There was, again, a three-person committee made up of administrative representatives, including the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk.
Any questions? Discussion? Roll call.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
No.
Hill.
Yes.
Muntzer.
No.
We do have two members of the commission that are missing today. We can bring it forward in a future meeting. We'll have to delay the start date if it gets approval based on the time.
Okay. Agenda item 9F, approve purchases and payment of invoices.
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices, F, presented.
Is there a second?
Support.
Discussion? Commissioner Muntzer?
I just wondered if the $9,000 removal of the underground storage tank was bid.
I would yield to Jeff Wood for the detail on that.
It was not. It was not bid.
And that was based on timing issues related to the project. There are, there were issues in play with the contractor. If we had gone to a bid process, that would have slowed us down for an additional period of time. The discovery of the tanks in the first place slowed us down to some extent. If we had gone through a bid process, it would have been a longer delay and potentially resulted in issues with the contract and outs that could have been afforded to the contractor if we didn't act in a more timely fashion than would have been otherwise possible if we did a bid process. And Jeff, can you correct me if there's anything else?
That's right.
Not ideal, but when you're in that kind of situation, something unforeseen comes up.
There, what, what transpired is there were two underground storage tanks that were discovered when we were moving a storm sewer. They were in the way of relocating the storm sewer with the market and street reconstruction project. And after talking to the city's environmental attorney and the DEQ, we were able to find out that those tanks were actually, the city of Mount Clemens was the registered owner of those tanks.
So they were gasoline? So they were gasoline storage tanks?
Yes. From, as far as we could tell, back in the '70s, there used to be a gasoline, a gas station on that corner.
And so we didn't have to deal with any kind of hazardous material removal?
Well, one of the, one of the tanks was closed in, in, actually, both of the tanks were closed in the ground. One of them was filled with a flowable fill, like a grout. The other was filled with sand and was full of liquid. The DEQ required us to pump that one that had the sand and the liquid, pump that stuff out, and dispose of it. The other one, we just pulled the whole tank, and we're able to dispose of it.
Okay. Good.
So this is one of the unforeseen things that happens when you start redoing streets.
And to the best of our ability, there are four others on that property similar. So, you may run into it again in a future project.
But we'll be more prepared next time.
Well, we don't know where they're at, so.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Well, I do have to say that intersection looks beautiful.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Menzger.
Yes.
Okay. City Managers report.
I had one item on the report with three bullet points on it, various project updates. The Market Street project is basically complete. The punch list of wrap-up issues, including cleanup and other items, is yet to be completed, and that remaining work will be in process over the coming weeks. Just updated the city website today to reflect the fact that the street was no longer subject to a regular or any kind of routine closure. To the extent that anything comes up during the punch list process that requires any kind of a closure would be for a very short period of time, and we'll keep our eye on that as it develops. But the project is substantially complete. Downtown crosswalk replacement beautification, as discussed previously, the majority of this project work is scheduled for 2016. Crosswalks involved in the Market Street project have been completed and can be seen at the intersection of Market and North Main Street, if anybody's had a chance to see that. That's going to be our MO for a variety of other crosswalks through the downtown area when that process is further completed in 2016. Miscellaneous concrete work. The city is holding meetings with our contractor, Luigi Cement, to plan this work in the city, which will include minor street repairs and catchphrase and work related to Utilities Department activities. So, in other words, if there was anything that was disrupted from a fix in the Utilities Department, we're going to go back and address that with paving by Luigi Cement. And then the other piece of work would be sidewalk flag replacements. We've discussed the sidewalk work that we've marked and undertaken for this portion of the fiscal year, and Luigi Cement would be handling the concrete work on those sidewalk flag replacements, numbering in about 204 sidewalk squares were part of our initial phase on this work. The work should begin this week or next. As I mentioned, we're having ongoing discussions with Luigi Cement to plan that out and get that started.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Okay. Moving along to Commissioner comments, and we will start with Commissioner, uh, Campbell, sorry.
Hi, forgettable.
Hey, brain freeze for a second there.
First, I want to say a thank you to all those along with Ms. Yulins for their work in saving the train depot. This building is a true treasure for the city, especially with its ties to Thomas Edison. Secondly, regarding the resident who came in from Smith Street, this street ties for Euclid east of Grashit as being the worst, and these streets need to be addressed soon. I know exactly what they're talking about. And lastly, we do not need any marijuana dispensaries. The very next day that the resident came in here questioning that, there was a shooting at one of those dispensaries in a neighboring community. They're bad news, so we need to act real fast on that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Menzger?
There is a 30th anniversary celebration and party of the Mount Clemens Race Track reunion, November 7, at DeCarlo's on Ten Mile Road. It is $30. But if you're interested, you can call Wild, or you can email Wild Bill Barnhart at mcrt@mountclemensracetrack.comcast.net. I want to point out that the fourth Wednesday enrollment for our public school, for the Mount Clemens Public School, showed a growth of 44 students. There were 21 schools that were listed in the newspaper. Only six out of the 21 had growth, so that was a really good news for the city, for the Mount Clemens schools. The Utilities Director position that I've asked about repeatedly was posted in the Macomb Daily, and so I was happy to see that. The Fire Department had a very successful open house. The Mount Clemens Optimist Club was there. We carve pumpkins. We carve pumpkins, and we carve pumpkins, and we carve pumpkins. But it was a very good event. The children were happy. Roscoe the Clown was there. It was a great thing for the community. Halloween is coming up. Our neighborhoods have a lot of really great displays. There's some, a beautiful display on Esplanade, there's one on North Esplanade, there's one on Maras, there's one on Bellevue, there's one on Camfield, there's one on Kingsley. So I would encourage you to drive around your neighborhood and take a look at the really great displays that some of our residents have put together. A lot of time, a lot of effort. They're just fantastic. So, I think the beautification committee at some point should start recognizing people who not only go all out for the snowflake award, but we might have to have a ghoul or goblin or award or something like that also. And I wanted to point out that although we're now talking about Halloween, we are coming close to the holidays. Approximately 86% of the students in the Mount Clemens Public School system live in poverty. 19.7% of children in Macomb County live in poverty. So if you're going to do some charity work, or some volunteering or giving this holiday, please consider your Mount Clemens Public Schools and what these homeless children and children who are living in poverty could use. So you can contact the school. They have somebody that works specifically with that program. You know, if you start now, maybe you can provide a joyous Christmas for a family in need. And that's my comments tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Bunton?
Okay. I recently discovered a new business here in the city of Mount Clemens, the Michigan Motorcycle Salvage. I didn't know about them. I kind of stumbled on it by accident. They offer used parts, pre-owned sales, and repair for motorcycles. So those of you who ride motorcycles, there it is, it's available for you. I frankly, anything that doesn't have three wheels, at least, I don't ride. So, anyway, welcome to the community. Mount Clemens Community Coalition for Youth and Families, along with the Mount Clemens Community Schools, held its first career day this past Thursday. It was a great success. We hope we exposed students to ideas for possible future occupations. It's my opinion that the students that graduate from high school usually get there, and they don't know what's next. They have no clue as to what comes after high school. So, there are a lot of things that you can do in, as earning a reasonable wage without having to go to a four-year college. So, we're trying to make that impression. We'll do it again next year, and if there are people in the community who would like to get involved with that, we'll let you know, or you can contact me, and we can put you on our list for the next time through. We encourage everybody to vote. This, even though it's a very small election, the local elections are the things that affect each of you in Mount Clemens the most. If you consider the national election, that does affect you somewhat. The state election affects you somewhat, but none affect you as much as the local election. So please, get out and vote. Don't just take this opportunity for granted. I did notice in our community that a lot of sidewalks that were not identified by our administration were actually in the process of being repaired, so I'm very appreciative of that. And with that, we'll go into Commissioner Wisdom. I think we'll use this one. "Education is learning what you didn't even know you didn't know." And that's by Daniel Borstein. With that, we'll say goodnight.
Okay. Thank you. I'd just like to remind everyone, again, that the Santa Parade has been changed this year. It will be the Saturday before Thanksgiving, rather than the Friday, the day after Thanksgiving. So, the date is November 21, 2015, on Saturday, and the night before will be the downtown Christmas open house. So we're having a whole Christmas weekend, Friday night and Saturday. I'd also, I've had a lot of people ask me if there's going to be a Christmas walk this year. And there is going to be a Christmas walk. It is sponsored by the Bath City Association. It's on a beautiful street in Mount Clemens. And tickets will be for sale at the Mount Clemens Library starting November 9. And the tickets will be sold until December 9, which is the day before the walk. The buses transport people to the street. The buses have 18 seats, and there are nine tours. So the, there's only 162 tickets for this event, so if you're interested in going, don't wait until the last minute, buy your tickets early. The tickets, by the way, are $18. And if you want more information, you can call 586-783-5898. And so, I'll see you there, hopefully. I'd just like to piggyback on what Commissioner Bunton said about our city election. It's an important event for the future of the city, so get out and vote on November 3. Thank you. Have a good evening and a great week. And I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Oh, roll call.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Menzger.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.